Hello everyone and welcome to the September 30th edition of the Decaturish.com Twitch Show. I'm your host, editor and publisher, Dan Wisenhunt. We've been off for a week. I had to take a trip out of town. Hope you didn't miss us too bad. We are back. Our guests today are Decatur's contributor Hans Utz and City Commissioner Lisa Meyer, Decatur City Commissioner Lisa Meyer. How are y'all doing today?
Great. How are you?
Cannot complain. Happy to be here. Hans, how about you, friend?
Doing well, doing well.
Awesome. So the way this works is we're just gonna chit chat, ask Lisa a few questions about what's going on with the city. If you have any questions for Lisa, what you need to do is create yourself a Twitch account, give us a follow and ask some questions in our message board and we'll be happy to get those to Lisa and she'll be happy to answer them. So Lisa, let's talk just a little bit about you and what you do. So you are a member of the Decatur City Commission. You are a new member. You were elected the same year that George Dusenberry was. And I keep trying to remind myself that you were elected last year, but it feels like it's been five years, you know, since you were elected because of the way this crazy year has been. But you were elected in November. You took office in January along with George Dusenberry. And remind me again of what seat you represent? I know it's Oakhurst, but what's this?
District two. I'm District two along with Patty Garrett.
That's right. District two. So the way Decatur's commission structure works is they have region-specific commissioners and then they have one citywide commissioner, but there's not, there's not a mayor. The mayor is actually elected by the fellow commissioners. So the current mayor's Patty Garrett, Mayor Pro Tim is Tony Powers, both of whom were elected by their fellow commissioners. And that happens every year. So that's like the first meeting they have every year is the organizational meeting where like, here's gonna be the mayor, here's gonna be the pro team, this is what we're gonna do. So how has this been for you? I know it's, it's a learning curve certainly. And you know, you couldn't have picked a more interesting time to be a public official, I guess. How, how has this been? What has this experience been like for you so far?
It is nothing like I could have imagined. I don't think anyone could have had the foresight to see a pandemic coming. I thought 2020 was going to be the best year of my life and all of these fabulous things were going to happen. And then, you know, we shut down essentially in, in March. And what has been so fascinating about all of this is that I could not have learned more in a shorter time without actually being embroiled in all of it. So, you know, we can theoretically talk about what we would do in the event of a pandemic as a city government, but here we are actually living it and learning through it. And I, I found this experience invaluable.
Well, I'm glad that you're hanging in there. I know I've tried to not grief y'all as hard as I usually do. Just because I know it's, you got a lot going on and you're, you're learning on the fly. How, so you've probably gotten to do, how many live meetings did you actually get to do before everything shut down? Like, how many live meetings did you participate in?
I think it was four and one offsite strategy session, if I'm not mistaken. Not very many.
Right. And so now everybody's having the Zoom meeting, which is kinda interesting. So like it's, everything's a big Zoom. We're Zoom meeting now. The city commission's a Zoom meeting now. Do you find that that is a helpful format for you or do you find it more challenging not being able to look people in the eye and talk to them about these things?
I miss the interaction. I miss the live interaction, but honestly, I think that the fact that more people are able to engage and attend meetings is, is actually the most positive thing about all of this. We wouldn't have the types of turnouts in a live meeting, an in-person meeting that we've been able to have with people being able to log in from their living rooms. So although it is a little bit more challenging for the five of us to, you know, establish close relationships as peers, it has really allowed me to hear from more of the constituents and that's really what we want, right?
Yeah.
You think that that'll continue? Do you think that'll, so I mean, I'm curious about, I have been curious about that, right? Cause you log into the meetings and you've got a hundred people as opposed to like the 20 that would typically show up. Do you, do you guys plan on or is there efforts underway to think about how to maybe continue that when we actually are able to get back to in-person meetings?
You know, I don't know. I haven't had a formal conversation with the city manager about this specific topic, but I do have thoughts. Thoughts on everything, as you know. But, but, but I do feel like if we can maintain some way for individuals to be able to participate in some sort of hybrid method, it would do us no disservice. So I will, once we start getting back into meeting in person, I will absolutely have those conversations with the city staff because I think that we'd be missing a valuable component that we've proven can work by eliminating the virtual participation.
And to be clear-
Basically, you're, you're serving parents with toddlers. The bedtime is, the meeting starts at bedtime, right?
I'm serving me. Absolutely. People like me.
The participation portion is what's new. Now, the city, city commission has always streamed its meetings as the planning commission ZBA, actually Decatur has always been at the forefront of that sort of thing in terms of, of streaming it. But the participation part is what's different. You know, people are actually able to participate and speak in ways that they, they haven't before, which is really interesting. And a lot of meetings that I usually have to send a reporter to cover, Tucker, Avondale Estates, to name two, are now being livestreamed effectively. And it's great. You know, I have reporters who have very real health concerns and they don't wanna go to a public meeting if they don't have to. So it's definitely something I think you could make an argument to keep. I did, so there was some disputes. So at the end of Monday, it was at the end of Monday's meeting and it was like at the tail end of it, like Mayor Garrett was making her closing remarks. And the feed cut and it cut for me and it cut for Alex. It didn't cut for a lot of other people. And I was like, oh no, we're not gonna know how the meeting ends if we don't see the end of it. And so I called, and maybe it was because I was trying to stream Monday night football in the background. I'm not gonna say that. Didn't have anything to do with it. It might've. But I, I was at the end and so I emailed him. I was like, we've gotta know how the meeting ends. And I'm like, well, she adjourned the meeting. So that's good. We didn't have, leave anything hanging. It was a weird format this month as well because it was three, I guess, cause there was a mistake in the advertising of the hearing. And so the city commission had to have three regular meetings in one month, which is a little unusual. But, you know, gives us stuff to write about. So I guess that's good. So Lisa, tell us about your relationship with Elizabeth Wilson, because one of the things that was kind of, was really interesting and noteworthy about your candidacy is you just, I'm not trying to say this the wrong way. You sort of seem to come out of nowhere in terms of the political system of Decatur. A lot of times when people run, you know, they do stints on this or that board. I know you've done some stuff like that, but to me, you were sort of a political unknown. And then you went from that to winning and not only just winning, but like stomping the opposition pretty handily. And I think, you know, getting the backing of Elizabeth, Mayor Emeritus Elizabeth Wilson played a big part of that. Tell us about how you got to know Mayor Wilson and what your relationship is like with her.
Well, when I decided to run, because I did from a political perspective, come out of nowhere, I made the decision in my living room, called one of my girlfriends who then, you know, said, talk to someone who's run for commission before, before you make the decision. And after having the conversation with that individual, I took my little papers in and, you know, turned them in and, and found myself in the throes of a campaign. And I did not fully understand that running for city commission in Decatur is as real as running for anything else. It's not just, you know, coffee conversations at Cavarna. It is a real campaign with real professional people who do this. They either back you or they don't. And they are not the type to back you just because. You have to make sense to them. You have to, you know, stand for things and be able to articulate why you stand for them. For me, I had a lot to learn about what had happened in the city before because the questions that were being posed to me were, were conversations that I'd never had or been a part of. And so in the, in the very beginning stages of, of the campaign, I was told to expect a phone call at 5:30 in the evening. And it was Mayor Wilson and she introduced herself to me and she very politely asked me if I would meet with her to talk about why I want to do this and why I feel strongly that I would be good for Decatur. Obviously she's really invested in the future of Decatur because she built so much of its history and its foundation. And so after having a, a meeting with her where she asked me some really tough and important questions, she felt comfortable with not only endorsing me, but also helping with my campaign. And I was hoping for, to develop more of a mentorship relationship with her. I have so much respect for her and I find her to be absolutely fascinating. But unfortunately with COVID, I haven't been able to interact with her because, you know, she's trying to stay safe and her family is making sure that she adheres to that. So hopefully in the future I'll be able to continue to, you know, have those, those coffee conversations with her. I've learned so much about her and her history in Decatur. I've learned so much about Oakhurst's history from her and I'm very grateful for that relationship for sure.
Yeah. Mayor Wilson's a treasure. I mean, she definitely should take every, every step that she can to protect herself. Tell, tell us about your reasons for running. What made you decide, sitting in your living room one day, that you wanted to take this on and run for city commission?
Well, to be perfectly honest with you, it was the result of a very impassioned plea by a neighbor here in Oakhurst who was so overwhelmed by the potential damage that the Atlanta Avenue project could have on his home. And the, and, and what really struck me was feeling as though just because there is only one house that would be affected by a project, that it didn't matter. And I could not, I could not remove myself from feeling like that one house could be my house. You know, I, my house isn't a fancy house. My house is just, just a house. And being in the position to where you are literally brought to tears with frustration in a city commission meeting because you don't have the understanding of the why behind it because people aren't having those conversations with you and because you don't feel that your voice is mattering in this situation is really what drove me to run. And I found that it wasn't just this particular neighbor, but a lot of neighbors were feeling as though they weren't a part of the dialogue. Or if they were a part of the dialogue, they weren't really feeling heard. And I, I felt like I could maybe bridge that gap.
Yeah. I feel like that that's a, that's a common theme in Decatur in general is they, they do what I feel is a fairly almost exhausting number of, of public engagement. And yet there are times where people feel left out of it for one reason or another. So that's, that's definitely a good reason to get involved. Do you feel like you've made any progress in bridging that gap at all? I mean, I know you've only been there a short time.
I do, I do, Dan. And honestly, it's because I think that the way that we've interacted in the past as a city government, and I say we, as though I've been a part of it for a decade, is very professional. They follow all of the rules of communication. They make sure to engage the community. But sometimes it can either, it can come across either cold or it can come across as though, as though it's not meant for everyone. And I think that I'm generally approachable. And so people who would not necessarily reach out to someone in the city, whether it's because they felt intimidated or overwhelmed by all of the information, now feel like they can, you know, ping me or text me or, you know, come yell at me from my yard. I'm very casual that way and have a conversation with me about things that matter. And they know that I'll carry that forward and at least bring that to the other commissioners for conversation. And I don't know if all of them always felt that way.
So if you just- And the truth is, in, in the management of any city, right? In the, in the management of, of, of anywhere where there are going to be public trade-offs. You, you can't make everyone happy, right? I mean, there are going to be decisions that are made that are going to alienate the one homeowner or they're going to alienate a group of people. And the, the trick of politics is to allow those individuals to feel heard, even if they don't get their way. And, and if they don't feel heard, then that's the, that's where you get hardcore activism from. Like when somebody, when somebody doesn't feel that they're heard and they feel like they've been legitimately wrong, that, that's a good way to light a fire under somebody. But it's certainly not, I would say certainly not unique to Decatur that that happens, right? I mean, that I'd certainly seen that on a, you know, Atlanta scale where, where, look, you, you know, you're making a decision that's gonna harm some people. And they're gonna be talked off about it. And honestly, it was the only option on the table that was possible.
Right. And harm is relative, right? Harm is relative, Hans. And, and so when we, when we even talk about government in general, government is intimidating. And it has seemed in the past that only certain people get to participate in government. And that the rest of us are just, you know, the, the recipients of whatever results of those decisions that were made with or without us, and we just have to endure that. And that's why I think that municipal government is so important because the participation of municipal, in, in municipal government gives people a real opportunity to actually see the work and see it a lot faster than you'd see it at say a federal level or a state level.
It's also 90% of what you feel, right? I mean, we get wrapped up around debates and all this stuff happening with the presidential election and senate level elections, but the stuff that they're dealing with is at a level that just doesn't affect you on a day-to-day basis that often. But you better bet the trash pickup schedule makes a really big difference, right? And if that, if that street isn't paved in front of your house or whatever it may be, right? Like local-
Or you don't have a sidewalk to get to school, you know? Absolutely.
And, and you're, you're, I'm speaking now to the general person from Decatur watching it, but like your activism on that will get you a sidewalk. Like, I mean, it's actually possible to influence it at that level. And so that's, I think that's the thing that I wish people understood a little bit more about the power that they can have with local government.
Absolutely. The five of us actually really do listen and we really do care about what our friends and neighbors are saying because we're Decatur. We're not that big. We really are all friends and neighbors. So for us, it is impossible for us to detach from the result of the decisions that we make because we know that they are affecting people that we care about, that we interact with, heck, that we love.
So if you're joining us, this is the Decaturish.com Twitch Show. I'm your host, editor and publisher, Dan Wisenhunt. Our guest today is Decatur City Commissioner Lisa Meyer and our regular contributor Hans Utz. If you have a question, create yourself a Twitch profile, get into our chats and ask the commissioner a question. We'll be glad to pitch it to her. So Lisa, I, I wanted to ask you about this recent protest at City Schools of Decatur. The City Schools of Decatur presented a reopening plan. If I'm being completely honest about this, I don't think that that plan is going to happen. That's just my personal opinion about it. But regardless, there's, this plan has been happening. There was a protest about it. And you showed up with snacks and some other things for the protesters. And what I thought was interesting about that is over the years, and this predates you, there was a lot of disconnect between, really conflict between the school board and the city commission. And a lot of that's historical. It has nothing to do with anybody that's up there now. There's a whole history there, but we won't get into that. Over the last few years, as I've been covering it, the city commission and Decatur have, and Decatur schools have made real strides to bridge those gaps and to have meetings together and to work collaboratively on some of the problems that they have. So when I saw you at that protest, my first thought was, is Lisa about to get in trouble? Because she's, she's out supporting people who are basically raking the school system over the coals. So I wanted to find out from your perspective, why it was important for you to get out there and, and show your support for the people who were protesting the reopening plan?
Yeah. You know, the cities, the city government and the city schools still, you know, interact completely autonomously or act autonomously. We don't, we don't have any influence over the school system. We don't have any say over the administration and what they do, none of that. So me being there was really just to support my community and my constituents. I, I've found that over the past year, I have attended many protests and rallies about many different topics. And I want to support individuals who are expressing themselves in a safe, healthy, meaningful and productive way. And so if we're just having a policy disagreement and it is not, it does not have anything to do with, you know, verbally assaulting anyone, it doesn't have anything to do with, with racism, it doesn't have anything to do with, with the mistreatment of others. I wanted to be there, whether I agreed or not, to support those individuals. So I came with my snacks of support wagon. I think what's really important to mention for me is that I am a mother of two children in this school system. And before I am anybody's city commissioner, I am Zacky, Dashy and Princess's mama. And that is what I will always be, number one. And the decisions that the school system makes definitely affect me as a parent. And so, you know, so for me as Lisa, Zack, Dash and Princess's mom, I have my views on what the city schools of Decatur choose to do and, you know, what the administration chooses to do. And, and I can't, I can't extract myself from that as long as my children are enrolled in the school system.
So I mean, were you indicating a position on the, the reopening plan? Have you, have you made any public statements about that?
No, and I probably won't. You know, I, I've had conversations with my friends about it and my family about it. And most importantly, I've had conversations with my sons about it. I, I have, I have a very strong opinion in my capacity as a mother. And, and I have had a lot of requests to make a statement as a commissioner. And even if I could do that, I don't think I would do that. But what I, what I can honestly say is at the end of the day, I am very well aware of the fact that no matter what the, the city schools of Decatur administration chooses to do, the ultimate oneness is on me as the parent of my children to make the decisions to keep them safe. And so I hate to be put in that position. It is always my hope that the school's administration will do the right things by the teachers and the students and the parents. I do not envy their position in having to make these decisions and create these plans at all. But ultimately, when I am thinking about the decisions made by the school system, I am thinking about them as a mother of children enrolled in the school system and not as a, as a city commissioner in any official capacity.
So it's an interesting, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Hans.
Well, I was gonna say, I, I have, I also have three kids in the, in the system, a fourth one, getting ready to come on up into it. But, you know, the challenge that the schools face and to a lesser extent, the city, I mean, there, there's certainly a ton of, of issues that the city faces in, in, in the COVID response. But the, the real front lines, I think, right now of the COVID battle are absolutely these school systems trying to determine whether or not it's safe for, for kids to go back. And the, the truth of it is, there is no good answer. There is no, there is no right answer. I mean, I, I know, I totally respect the people that are out there protesting, but had the schools made a different decision, there would have been other people out there protesting. I mean, the fact is, there isn't the right answer. And, and, and that's where I think the right question to be asking of the administration as they go through these decisions is just be as transparent as possible about what supports your decision. And, and because those facts are the kind of facts that, that parents like us need in order to be able to judge for ourselves whether it's safe for our, our kids to go back. And, and the truth of it also is that it is differentially safe for different people, right? If you're, if you are, if it, if you're, if grandma is at home with you, that is a very different risk profile than if, you know, grandparents live in a different part of the country. And so, I mean, I, I, I certainly appreciate your willingness to be out there to support your constituents. Because had the schools made a different decision, you would have been out there supporting a different group of constituents, right? I mean, that's just-
Absolutely. With my snacks of support.
What were the snacks of support? Inquiring minds would like to know.
Okay. So we had granola bars. We had go-go squeezes. We had organic juice, cause we're fancy. We had water. What else? And we had hand sanitizers, of course, and wipeys and things like that. But, but it was hot that day and I was actually really concerned about folks being out there for a few hours with, with no water and no shade. And so I wanted to at least make sure that, that my people were okay. But, but yeah, this is, this is impossible. This is an impossible situation. If this were happening to me as a mom five years ago, knowing that I work full-time, you know, fortunately my company is allowing us to work from home for, well into 2021. So we don't have to worry about that. But if my children were in, you know, fifth and third grade and needed me to be more hands-on with them while I'm working full-time to provide for my family, what would I do? I don't know what I would do. And it, it does, and I completely understand the parents who are in that position because if it weren't for a different time, I would have been in that position too.
Yeah. And just as some context for what's going on, obviously there was a protest. There is gonna be, I believe it's tonight, there's a faculty and staff town hall happening at CSD. We were told that we were not gonna be able to, to attend, but they did promise to share the recording of that meeting with us later. So we're gonna definitely write, write up. We're gonna have Sarah Amos, who's our City Schools of Decatur reporter, take a listen to that and write it up. Also, there is apparently a fave student who is really, really ill right now and has COVID or suspected to have COVID. So there's a lot going on in the background surrounding this discussion. At one point, City Schools of- City Schools of Decatur had a data information message portal up there and it said something to the effect of due to the politicization of certain data implying CDC data, we're gonna take this down for now. And of course, a lot of people that work at the CDC have kids in City Schools of Decatur. So it looked like it's a weird political consideration when you're the superintendent of City Schools of Decatur because you've got a lot of their kids in your school district. And so it felt like a swipe at them. So I don't really know how that's gonna play out in practicality as this goes forward. My initial reaction was there's no way this is gonna happen. There's just the it's too quick, the the cases are not going down nearly fast enough. There's too much opposition to it. It just it's one of those things that doesn't have buy in and and I just was really skeptical. And and I frankly am surprised that there hasn't been a a meeting after that protest to say, hey, we changed our mind about it, we're not gonna do this. Because as far as I know, they're the only school district that's even in town that's even contemplating that.
So what so like there certainly are school districts in town contemplating it. I think that they're definitely maybe stepping out on a limb a little bit by publishing exactly what they want to be doing. But I would also say to anybody watching it, there's just no factual set of circumstances that would justify assuming anything that is said now is baked into stone for what's gonna happen six weeks from now. Or I mean, so so yes, I think that it's aspirational, the schools are back in November. But I'm kind of with you, Dan, that that we don't know. Like if the facts on the ground change, the one thing I am certain of is that if the facts on the ground change for the worst, Dr. Duty and the school board are gonna review that decision and make a different one, right? And and by the same token, if the facts on the ground dramatically improve, which in six weeks they could, I mean, they certainly dramatically improve from July 4th to Labor Day, like you can remember what it was like right after July 4th. And so yeah, I think that they put a stake in the ground with maybe not enough caveats wrapped around it, but my read on that is it is utterly dependent on the facts of the ground when that time comes to pass.
Well, you know, part of the problem is that you and I have both talked about how we would love to have a nuanced and thoughtful plan about how we could maybe get some of some kids in school and do it safely. The problem is is that nuance and thoughtfulness are in real short supply right now. Everybody's kind of dug into one position or another and there's not a whole lot of middle ground. And so I was I actually had a, I'm not in City Schools of Decatur, but I did have a conference with my son's teacher today. And I told her, I said, my assumption is that we're gonna have virtual school the rest of the year. That is my assumption because I I just want to prepare myself for that mentally. I don't I don't want to get in the headspace where I'm like, oh, it's gonna happen, it's gonna happen, and then it doesn't happen and I get depressed again. Like, prepare for the worst, expect the worst, then maybe you'll be pleasantly surprised. But I, the way that everyone is dug in, you know, and there and there's so few people who I think are are taking this middle approach. I don't see how we can have in-person school until there's a vaccine, if that's the the position that everyone's gonna take. I mean, I just don't see it happening. That's my personal opinion. Not here, anyway.
Yeah, I think that there, when you when you say nuance, there are so many nuances to a even a proposed return to school. When we do send our children back to school, I can't imagine that it's going to be in a way that was just like how they left school. You know, they're not going to be interacting in the same way. They're not going to be interacting with their teachers the same way. And we really have to look from a child to child perspective and say, okay, does this child learn well in this environment? You know, does this child actually learn better outside of this structured environment and in a more virtual environment? And then we kind of have to make those those decisions just based on, you know, our awareness of the way our personally, our children learn. And you know, honestly, I mean, this is this is as tough a decision as making decisions about their healthcare. You know, I mean, these are decisions that are going to affect them you know, for the for the unforeseeable future. And what I don't want to do personally as a parent is put so much pressure on the learning in the same way that they were learning in a non-COVID-19 situation. As much as I want to ensure that they are feeling like whole, complete humans. And if I can take some of those stressors away by eliminating a lot of the pressure that they may have felt last year in a more, you know, rigorous academic environment, I'm willing to do this just this once to make sure that they come out of this okay. If they come out of this okay, I feel like I did my job as a mom.
I feel like everybody's gonna come out of it okay, but.
What I worry about, so I don't know, Dan, like that's where I I actually
Well, educationally, no, but I mean, health wise, you know, I'm hoping, yes.
I got you.
Educationally, it's a totally different story, but.
Yeah, like I look at it, my, I have a twelve-year-old, a ten-year-old and a five-year-old in the in the school system. And the twelve-year-old and ten-year-old, they're fine. They don't love this virtual thing, but they don't they don't love going to school either. Like, I mean, it's that's the that's the nature of it, right? They're staying up with the lessons as much as lessons is being put out there. And and it's as good as you could possibly expect in an environment where the entire globe has been impacted. There's just no scenario that the five-year-old can do this, like just no scenario where the five-year-old can do this. Already, you know, special needs type stuff that that exists, it's just not possible to do school on a screen. And so she's gonna fall behind. And we're, I'm fine with that because at that age, like this is eminently fixable. In large part because I have the resources to fix it. I get, I mean, I, I, we've had people on the show, Dan, that have talked about, you know, we don't want Georgia to fall behind and we don't, you know, we don't want other states to supersede us because they're back in school, but and I, that's not gonna be the way that it works. Like in an aggregate level, everybody's dealing with this across the country at an aggregate level. What is gonna happen is the people with the resources that can provide the kids what they need to have, who are at home with their kids or there are at-home parents with the kids are gonna be able to weather this reasonably well. It's the people that don't have the resources for it and don't have the support structures for it and don't have that cushion that are gonna be massively disproportionately impacted by this.
You're exactly right.
It's not, it's not in aggregate what's gonna happen. It's in the interim, like you're just gonna see this gap that we've been so desperately trying to close grow even wider. And that's what I worry about. Like, that's where if I'm a school administrator thinking about what needs to happen, it's how do I not make that problem get exacerbated?
Yeah, I mean, this is going to widen the equity gap that students experience anyway. I think that from our perspective and you know, we live in a community that's fairly privileged. And so in other communities, that is so much more of a real and pressing and scary issue that needs an immediate, that needs immediate action. And for us, there are individuals in the community and I think Decatur Education Foundation and others are trying to help bridge the equity gap of the students here in Decatur. But we'd be, you know, we'd we'd be fooling ourselves to say that the that the issues that we have in Decatur are as as numerous when it comes to that kind of lack of resource as they are in other communities, you know, I and I want to be very clear on that. We have equity issues. We have some some pretty significant equity issues here in Decatur, but there are other communities where those equity issues are just the way of life. And so the the decisions that those school systems are having to make where they're not as either acutely aware, they don't care, or they don't have the resources to address them. That's where we're going to see what is an inconvenience to us for the most part become trauma to those communities.
Yeah, and I feel like they don't have a good handle on who's being really affected by it's the other problem. You know, here in DeKalb County Schools, for the longest time, we couldn't even get all the kids Chromebooks, you know, if you were kindergarten through second, you know, you either had one or you didn't. If you didn't have one, you couldn't get it through the school system. And and I really worry about that. You know, I was told that my son's kindergarten class you know, has about 11 students, the average is closer to 20. So where'd the other students go? What what happened? What's their story? What happened to them? Some of them are homeschool, I'm sure. Some parents might have just said, you know what, he'll do or she'll do kindergarten when they're supposed to be in first grade, you know, like some people have made that decision as well. And we're just not gonna know really for a long time how that's affected them. He did talk about equity, so I wanted to jump into this question I wanted to ask you. Deborah Van Tries, Black Chef, owns Twisted Soul Restaurant, had it in Decatur, it closed in 2015, she moved it over to West Midtown. She gave an interview with Bon Appetit Magazine very recently and she explicitly called out racism as the primary reason that she left Decatur. And I don't want to put words in her mouth, but my my recollection of what I read was that it was an issue of chefs questioning white chefs questioning her and her her ability to do what she did. It was it was them, it was sort of a where are you from, you know, those microaggression type questions where they were sort of subtly undercutting her professional credentials. And she she said, you know, that drove her to to move elsewhere. I wanted to know if you had read that interview and what your takeaways from it were.
I read that yesterday and from a personal perspective, the first thing I wanted to say was name some names. Give me some names because the last thing I want to do is go get a to-go plate or a cocktail in a restaurant where there are individuals who are disrespecting black people, disrespecting people of color, smiling in my face and then talking about me when I walk out. That I am not, you know, I am not about to support the business of someone who is perpetuating racism in our community. And then I, you know, I simmered down and became less angry and then I became really sad for her and embarrassed for my community because we in Decatur promote the fact that we embrace diversity and we promote that we encourage small business ownership and minority business ownership. And from a government perspective, we absolutely do. I I don't know if that's necessarily as true, or at least back in 2015, if that was necessarily as true from a customer perspective, from a resident perspective. And I I'm really sad that she had that experience here. I, I, but I would never ever discount her story because if a person of color, if a black woman says that they have experienced racism, whether it is overt or not, believe them. We deal with it all the time. And usually we just, you know, let it roll off our backs and keep moving just for the sake of having to survive. But for her to feel that she could not make her business work because she did not feel like she could put down roots in this community because of microaggressions and racism just made me so sad.
Did it surprise you?
It did. It did. I mean, yeah, I, I I I am a an optimist. And everybody knows I'm I'm, you know, sunshine, rainbows, unicorns, all the things. It is always my hope that that is not happening in my community. Am I foolish? Do I believe that that there are no racial microaggressions in this community? Absolutely not. But but I think it surprised me to the extent that she felt that people were, that people felt so emboldened to come into her place of business or even in networking events or wherever this occurred and discount her, discount her abilities, discount her talent, discount her as a business owner. I I just hoped that that was not something that our business community would do to each other. So yes, I was surprised reading it and almost got a little defensive and then realized, yeah, I can't always have the rose-colored view of what's going on in in our communities, you know, especially in an industry like the restaurant industry, which is competitive and from what I hear, you know, very tough behind the scenes.
Very bro-ish behind the scenes. I'm gonna call it for what it is, right? I mean, so I I I was shaking my head as you were saying that you were surprised and I am so sorry for having done that.
That's okay.
The truth is, I I'm not surprised, right? Like you see these comments, Dan, you see the comments.
I blocked most of them.
Right? And and who's making those comments? It's the, it's a bunch of white dudes, right? Like, I mean, let's be honest, it's there's, this is not a representative sample of Decatur that is pushing back on her claims. You don't, you're not, you're not, like, there is not a single, I don't think there's a single black person being like, well, I don't know what she's talking about, right? Like, you don't, you don't even see a whole lot of women saying it. It's a bunch of white dudes saying, what the hell is she talking about? Maybe maybe we should shut up and listen, I think. I mean, like, so that industry in general, not that I'm gonna just blame it on the industry because these are individuals making these decisions, but I I think there are cultures in certain industries that exaggerate some of these negative aspects and you know, the cooking industry is pretty famous for taking a dim view of people of color and taking a dim view of women. And then so where does that leave a black woman entering that industry?
It's also famous for stealing their work and profiting from it. That's lest we forget. Yeah, it's one of those. I, yeah, I feel like that white people have have been sort of indoctrinated in ways they don't realize to automatically be like, no, wait a minute. That had to be something else. It couldn't have been racism, you know? They automatically get all Sherlock Holmes on it and they're like, well, let's look at the lease and let's look at the thing. But I remember, you know, Nikki Salcedo, y'all know Nikki. She she writes for us and she, you know, wrote a column once about how she was racially profiled and the comments were just ridiculous. They were like, well, did you check to see if there's a police report? I'm like, no, Nikki's my friend. I believed her, you know, if that's what she said happened, that's what happened. But I was just astonished at like how little like, shouldn't we know now? Like, shouldn't it be apparent to us now that we should just start believing people when they say this and, you know, give them the, give them the benefit of the doubt. You know, if it turns out to be something else later, that's fine, but there's no harm in believing them. You know, from the get-go, because most likely it did happen.
I would take it a step further even, and not just believing, but like, look at your, look at yourself. Did you contribute? Like, do you contribute? Like, I mean, it's not coming from nowhere.
Right.
And so just make sure you're not part of it because it almost certainly is the case, if you are defensive when you read that article, you probably are a part of it.
Right, and how many times does a racist person raise their hand and say, racist, right? You know, that doesn't happen.
Well, Hans did, but that's a different story.
So they're going to excuse the behavior because they're not racist. Oh, goodness, no. There's gotta be a rational explanation for why I'm exhibiting this behavior. So it is really up to us to call it out when we see it and help to identify it and start to attach consequences to these behaviors so that people will actually start to recognize that change needs to happen in order for these consequences to stop.
Well, Hans had written a really wonderful column a few few weeks ago about acknowledging, wasn't just acknowledging privilege, but acknowledging the default racism that a lot of white men have and don't want to cop to, because we, most of our lives are blissfully unaware of how much consumer culture caters to us and our needs and what we want. And it's and it's easy for us to have those blinders on and say, well, I voted for Obama or I have a black friend or et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And to to use that to discount the possibility that you have any racist views that might have informed any decisions that you made or any things that you said. And I I forget the title of the column, but if you look up Hans Utz, I am a racist in Google, it's gonna, it's gonna pop up.
And you know, I read it.
Oh, I know you read it. I can't remember the column, though. I can't remember the title.
My core thesis here, it's my core, because I don't think you, it's not, you don't have to be active to be racist, right? Like, we'll start from a couple of tenants, right? You either believe it is better to be white or not in America. Right? And if you don't And if you don't think it's better to be white, then you're a moron and you're not just looking at the facts. So if it is better to be white in this country, you haven't earned that. None of us that are white have earned that. That's just a artifact of the history of this country. So you have this unearned benefit in this country. You either take steps to try to recognize that benefit and counter it, or you don't. And if you choose not to take steps to try to counter an unearned benefit, you are a racist. That is what is the definition. You are taking something that is not yours from someone else who deserves it just as much as you, based solely on the color of skin. That's the definition. And so it, you know, that's where I I think internalizing that, if we if we think about it in terms of racism is only something that happens when you take an active step to har- harm somebody intentionally, man, you're leaving out the tip of the iceberg. You're leaving out all the other crap that you do every day that also harms people.
The entire foundation of white supremacy. Because because white supremacy isn't always something that is acted upon, but it in in an overt way. But, you know, it absolutely will come out in in microaggressions and then individuals who have those beliefs then indoctrinate others. And I have to be very careful with that in my own family because most people know my, you know, I have three biracial children. My youngest son is is black and Mexican. But my my oldest two are black and white. And I have to make sure that they are not hearing things that are not intentionally meant to hurt them, but still makes them question their value as young black men. I am always on guard for that.
And I'm sorry that you have to be, you know, uh it's it's sucks. And it's gonna take a long, long, long time and a lot of work. And frankly, it, you know, the pe- the work needs to be put in by everybody, but, you know, not everybody wants to do that. A lot of people, I mean, that's sort of what, I I hate to get on national politics, but that's really what Trump is selling, right? He's selling, he's selling the whole idea that, no, no, you don't have to worry about this. These these people are just crazy. I'm right. Um you you just listen, you just like me and I'll protect you from this. You know, that was his whole uh thing when he he stopped the diversity training or whatever it was the other. And he said it was un-American, this diversity training that was going on.
There's good people on both sides, Dan.
There's good, yeah, that's.
That nonsense.
Yeah, that whole.
The core of it.
So I wanna talk to, talk about a moment uh involving Lisa Meyer um at the retreat. And I and I grieve the hell out of the city commission on these retreats. And I'm gonna save that rant for another time and another day, um because I know Lisa's heard it and she probably doesn't wanna hear it again. Um but she was there and it, you know, you could tell, I'd been to retreats before, but like, when Lisa's there and George is there, you know, you can tell there's a different shift in the conversation. And and one of the things that Lisa was was bringing up was the inclusionary zoning and why it hadn't been done. And the reason that that, so inclusionary zoning would require a developer to set aside a certain amount of units as affordable uh when they come in and do a new project. It's something that had been talked about and talked about. The Decatur had uh tried to achieve that with a density bonus. The density bonus, by all accounts, was not very successful. The density bonus would allow a builder to build more units than the zoning would allow if they would set aside some as affordable. Not, very few of any developers took advantage of that. So uh Lisa really pushed for that at this, and it's one of the reasons I wish that those meetings were easier for the public to see because it was kind of a remarkable moment. Lisa was was really pushing them. So could you talk to me a little bit about what your thought process was going into that meeting? Um and because you got results, you ultimately got what you were asking for and in a short amount of time as well. I mean, it happened before the year was out, that we had inclusionary zoning in Decatur. Uh so kudos to you for that, but but tell us a little bit about how you came to that decision that this was the thing that you needed to push uh really hard for to to get done.
Well, affordable housing from just as as a general issue was something that I knew that we needed to take swift action on. Um I I had this real, very real concern that I would be a part of a government body that was perceived as hypocritical. And I was not going to allow that to happen with my tail in this seat. And so I basically created a plan in my mind that I would look at the affordable housing recommendations, not just the task force recommendation, but basically, you know, the the industry-wide, if you will, for lack of a better term, recommendations, and find the fastest and easiest to implement and basically present those as requests for agenda action items each year that I'm in the city commission. And for me, I thought that the mandatory inclusionary zoning aspect was the easiest to implement. I was not expecting as much pushback as, I I I don't know if you sensed the pushback too, but I
Yeah, the the pushback that I sensed was more of a, you know, the the city commission was like, well, we're gonna study this. And I'm like, y'all studied it. I mean, you know, it's been studied. That's one thing Decatur does pretty well is it studies a lot. Um so this wasn't uh, you know, new, but yeah, I I felt like the the pushback that I remember was strictly, well, this is gonna take time. And you were basically saying, well, you had time. Um let's, if it's gonna take time, then let's figure out a deadline uh and not just leave it this open-ended, oh, well, it's gonna take time. And I think that was sort of the core difference is that you you went in there and you said, okay, we're gonna have something done by this date, you know, I wanna see something on the agenda by then. Um and it it lit a fire under some people. Um and that was, that was, I don't know if it was pushback to the idea itself
Right.
as as much as it was pushback to the process for getting there.
To the time, to the timing. And for me, every time I see a development break ground with residences in this city that doesn't have affordable housing units, I feel physically sick. I am angry that action hadn't been taken before now. I am grateful that I had a part of the of of the zoning ordinance coming to fruition. But I still, I still feel a loss based on the lack of an action due to, I I think, you know, I think that the city is very cautious in the way that they act. They are very responsible. They are very studious. And I think all of those are very positive. But when we start to find that our comfort zone is more in the studying and the talking and less in the action, we're not really serving our community. We're not serving our community in the best way that we can. And so now that we've got that ordinance, I am, I I am very aware of the fact that it's not going to impact as many developments as that have been built prior to it. Uh I'm grateful for the properties that will have affordable units in them. But I also know that that means that I need to go to the next item on my list and present that to my other four commissioners to make sure that we maintain momentum in making sure that we have affordable housing in the city.
And what's the next item?
Well, I hadn't really figured that out yet. It's between two. So I I have a very unpopular opinion that I think we should start working on an affordable path to homeownership in some way. I think that that should be a priority because honestly, you know, I think a lot of people are very comfortable with affordable housing in the terms of rentals. But I don't think that people are as comfortable with affordable housing in the terms of homeownership because you didn't earn it like I did. You didn't work as hard as I did. Or, you know, some other foolish, you know, sentiment like that. And for me, I I personally think that if we as a city can act in ways that we can, you know, secure land that would allow us to build properties for homeownership and keep those affordable because the city owns the land, that we would be doing a great service to our community. But, you know, there are other zoning issues that we can look at that I think might be a little bit easier and faster to tackle. And um and so I am doing all of my research on those types of things to make sure that I am very well informed when I do come to uh the commission with a proposal of what we should do next.
The the challenge, what you're, is an interesting observation that the the com- that, not just the commission, the city in general and I think in many cases, government in general, will have a tendency to investigate a problem thoroughly before moving forward on policy. And in some cases, and housing is one of those, that means you're always back-footed to the market because the market doesn't move that slowly. The market pops and, you know, sizzles and it, you know, you'll have these peaks and uh trowels and and you know, we almost missed the window with Decatur's apartment market, right? That that and and I think that we were caught flat-footed by how quickly the demand for apartments grew. Um and and I I think one of the reasons why we're comfortable with a a zoning ordinance for apartments is because, I mean, in no scenario, when you're talking about affordable housing, that is a regulatory agency putting their fingers on the scale of the market. That is, at the end of the day, what's happening, right? And I think people can get their heads around, well, if it's happening to a multimillion-dollar apartment developer and it, you know, like there, it's only a couple of units that they have to worry about, you know, like it's, nobody really feels, oh, poor, poor that guy who is only gonna make seven million instead of ten million off that development. I I think that you have a tougher road to hoe when you start talking about homeownership, right? Because then that, because then somebody's like, well, you're putting your finger on the market where it's my home. My market can be affected by that. And and so building up, uh as we saw, like a lot of the community support that came out with some of the stuff in Legacy Park, which I realize is very, is a different structure. But educating people to clearly understand what it is that we're talking about when we talk about affordable housing and how critical it is in order for this to be a viable community over the long run. Um you you end up in a situation where the people that are against it talk themselves into a very uncomfortable position because it's really hard to talk against affordable housing without starting to do those, you know, I'm not a racist, but I'm not against affordable housing, but like all those butts start to come out.
Absolutely. It becomes a conversation about income. Then it becomes a conversation about status and equity. And then it becomes a conversation about race every time. And I think that we need to be very aware of that and accept that and accept the fact that there's work that we need to do to bridge the gap of racial equity. And we're not going to do it by continuing to put individuals in an apartment complex and not allow them the opportunities to really build a familial foundation that they have to grow on that a lot of families, specifically white families, received in the fifties and sixties.
Well, I wanted to uh, again, thank you for joining us. Thank you for your public service. Uh we are getting to seven o'clock and I know people have things to do, so I don't wanna keep you too long. But uh I hope you can join us again, Commissioner. Uh we did enjoy having you this time. And if you're ever available, please uh come on the show again. Uh maybe we can have another commissioner on as well and talk about some more stuff. Um and uh, you know, thank you for your public service. We really appreciate that. And thank you, Hans, for taking time to talk to us today.
Of course, I enjoyed it, Commissioner. It was great.
Thank you for having me.
This is the Decatur.com Twitch show. I'm your host, editor and publisher, Dan Wasenhut. We will be back on Friday at six o'clock and we will be talking about the census. I'm gonna have three or four census experts uh who are gonna be joining us. Uh the census is very important, as Commissioner Meyer will tell you. Uh real quick, Commissioner Meyer, how, I know there's a commission contest or something going on around the census. Can you update us on that?
Yes, so there is a competition between Decatur and Avondale Estates. Uh the city that has the highest, uh oh, I think it ends today. The city that has the highest participation rate uh wins and the loser has to put up the other city's banner on their city hall and the mayor has to wear the other city's swag. And at last report, Avondale Estates was whooping us pretty good. So, so if you see me running around in an Avondale Estates t-shirt, that's why. So please, everybody, complete your census, um not just because of the competition, but because it's really important to make sure that we get the funding we need to give you the resources that you need.
So I was just gonna assume that Decatur had annexed Avondale if I saw that, but that's that's also a plausible explanation for it. Uh seriously, do your census, people. It's it's super easy. You probably got something in the mail. Just do it. It's so important uh for for federal funding and everything else. So that is gonna be the the topic of discussion on Friday. We hope you'll join us, six o'clock. Uh have a great evening and we will talk to everyone again soon. Bye, everybody. Uh, have a great evening and we will talk to everyone again soon. Bye, everybody.